I'm Kelly Kennedy. I've been a board member with Steppingstone for over 20 years. Steppingstone is a child-friendly facility where children can come and talk with professionals about something that's going on in their life that they're very uncomfortable discussing with other people, primarily child abuse and maltreatment. Steppingstone provides a child-friendly environment where a child can meet with a professional to talk about the abuse that's happening in their life. Recently, we've been able to expand our services to become certified as an adult sexual assault center, so now we can have medical exams and do interviews with adults that have been assaulted sexually. So if you have any questions about our services that we can provide, just call our crisis line.
I'd like to call the Dublin City Council meeting order. If you would, let's stand. We'll say the pledge to the flag and then, uh, excuse me, Gerald Smith, Councilman Gerald Smith, give a certification, and then we'll say the pledge to the flag. Thank you.
All right, please. I'd like to thank you so much for allowing us to gather here and conduct the city's business. We ask that you put your hand on us and guide us in the right direction as we make decisions for those we serve, but we'll never forget that all these good things that we were able to have come through you, from you, for us to forgive us by saying, "Believe us," in the right way. Yes, all of that, he's the same. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, ungodly and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Our first order of business is approval of the October 15th Council meeting minutes. You have a copy of those. You ready for approval, Mayor?
Sir.
Got a motion and a second in discussion. Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over $3,000.
Will we pay the bill as a mayor?
Second. Got a motion and a second. Pay the bill, any discussion there? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number three is approval of purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones?
Very happy to say there are none purchases.
Okay, thanks, sir. Item number four is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone 4.89 acres, more or less, located at parcel D09D003, from B2 highway-oriented business to, uh, is it, I'm sorry, it's not on the caption here.
R4.
R4.
Multi-family.
Multi-family. Mr. Jones, do you mind reading that, please?
It's an ordinance to the zoning map amendment number 20-19, amendment to the official zoning map in the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 4.89 acres more or less, land located at parcel D09D003, Dublin, Georgia, from B2 highway-oriented business zone to R4 multifamily residential zone. Posses is for multi-family residences.
Okay, since this is a second reading, we will now close the city council meeting and we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance change. Yes, sir, if you would, come up to the podium and announce your name and who you'd win and that sort of thing.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here to consider this tonight. My name is Jeremiah Warren. I'm with Tru Northway. I'm from Cairo, and we, our company builds and develops multifamily residential developments throughout Georgia. We have projects in Cairo, Moultrie, Famburgh, we have one pending in Americas. Our research into Dublin looked great, and the folks here have been really great, so we thought we'd give our product a shot here. It's not typical multifamily. One thing that sets us apart is that we build to a very high energy standard, and if any of you have questions about that, I'd go into more detail. But our goal is to eliminate 90% of the typical electric usage, and because we invest so much into those building methods, we rent the units out with the utilities included. In areas like, areas that we've built it with more like Dublin, it's very difficult to make it work in towns like this with new product. I'm trying to build for a group that doesn't get a lot of new built for. Our target price is $650 per month for a one-bedroom unit, and that is to include electric, water, and internet services, of course, you know, long-range, and trash services also. We feel like that is a rate that works in any town that we go to, and for that price, it's very difficult to build new product without a government subsidy. We do not seek or nor accept any government subsidies. This is all on our own dime. We don't need any help from financial help, from the city or state, from federal levels. Even the Section 8 program, which is a good program, helps a lot of folks, that's not what we're going for. We want to provide a very high-quality space to live in for people that live on regular everyday incomes. That's a space that nobody is sort of tapping into, so that's what we're doing. We chose this site because of its proximity to city services, retail, grocery, the access to it is very good. We also liked that it is directly adjacent to other multifamily, and should not be a lot of traditional neighborhood to be aggravated by. It's also close to the commercial services as well. It's a nice flat, pretty piece of dirt, and we think we'll be well with it. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that any of you may have about what we'd like to do.
Okay.
How long will it be before we can complete?
So typically, after we get an approval, it takes maybe a morning at most to close a plant, and it takes two or three months to get the engineering done, and each town has unique zoning ordinances, so we'll get into that with your zoning office. And all that process takes about six months, jump through all the hoops, and we'll be ready to go. This is not something we want to buy and hold for a long period of time. This is, if we get a yes tonight, my phone called Lawrence to engineer, I don't think I see him in here, but I met him last time I was here. Maybe he is here, we had a lot of max. Anyway, so tomorrow, we'll get that process started, and there'll be some business for me up here. That's the engineer that meets you before.
I think you're talking about Josh Christian.
Yes, maybe, okay. So anyway, everybody who met in Dublin so far has been really helpful, so it'll be, you know, as soon as we can get there.
But how many units?
Oh, it looks like the zoning's going to allow for about 60, and that is, just so you know, that's a level that we can provide onsite management, a lot of oversight. Any of that's in that, it gets difficult to be able to afford the oversight. You need to keep a place, you know, rules followed and so forth, but 60 is a good number for us.
What size of unit are we, like, one, two, three bedrooms or?
Right, we'll be doing mostly one bedrooms, and I understand Dublin has a minimum square footage of 550 feet. Typically, in the past, we've done smaller than that, but 550 works for a one bedroom, and a two bedroom probably 750.
What kind of maintenance upkeep program would you have, or if you can expect, we can expect the tenants to have?
Sure, so part of our management plan for Dublin is it's a little bit further out of our circle than the other projects. We will partner with a local management company to sort of use their circle of influence. It's no need for me to come in and try to fill up a Rolodex, guys who can do those and those good people here who already have that. So we'll, we would count on our local farm towns with those, and, you know, regular, a lot of the background checks, the rent collections, that stuff we do because it's all online now, but we will have a local presence here to immediately address any emergency that comes up or, you know, right by the scenes, breaking rules and handling them.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance change? If not, is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to? Here none, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and we'll turn it over to council for action.
Most approved.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Daniels, are you going to call roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Gerald Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Chris Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your investment in our community.
Hi, I'm Anna Grace Myers from Myers Equipment and Supply, inviting you to come in today and see our full line of Gravely zero-turn mowers. For more than 100 years, Gravely mowers have been fueled by a constant drive to improve, built to mow the distance. Find your new Gravely mower at Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson in Dublin.
Portions of this program are brought to you by CurePoint Cancer Treatment, 2406 Bellevue Road in Dublin. At CurePoint Cancer Treatment, we're bringing you state-of-the-art cancer treatment right here at home. CurePoint Cancer Treatment, check us out on Facebook.
At Lake's Alignment, we would like to take this time to thank our community for your support over the last 66 years, and especially these last few months with the opening of our brand-new truck center. When you drive into Lake's Alignment, you get master-trained technicians like Anthony Penny. Everybody calls him Bug, but it means so much to us, and on behalf of Neil Harden, Lisa, our staff, and the entire Lake family, we thank you for supporting us since 1954. Come see us today. We open every morning at 8:00, and now our truck center is open on Saturday to serve your big trucks and equipment from 8 until 12. At Lake's Alignment, we thank you and this entire community, and we'll continue to serve you with the best-trained staff and friendly, courteous service. Lake's Alignment, hometown people serving hometown people. Come see us today, 104 Johnson Street, East Dublin.
Okay, item number five, a discussion and/or action on a resolution to approve a contract with Flot Group, Inc. for license plate detection services.
It's a resolution number 20-28, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve the terms and conditions of an agreement with Flot Group, Inc. for the provision of software and hardware solutions for automatic license plate detection. It authorizes the mayor and city clerk to exercise, I'm sorry, execute the agreement with Flot Group, Inc., to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, council, have you got any questions about this item or any action?
Most approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number six, a discussion and/or action on a resolution to authorize the city to apply for a loan from GFA for funding for upgrades to the Dublin industrial park sewer system. Mr. Jones?
This is resolution number 20-27, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve an application for a GFA loan for Dublin industrial park sewer improvements to authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute and deliver documents necessary for the application process, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. Council, you've heard the resolution. What's your pledge?
Mr. Mayor, approve. Mr. Mayor, and we also had a grant that we're looking at too, correct?
That's correct.
And basically, this loan will be contingent upon receiving that grant, is that?
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, we got a motion, do we hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number seven is discussion and/or action on a contract with Ethos Preservation for Services to Apply for National Registered Nominations.
Yeah, we've applied for national register for the Emery Thomas Auditorium and the golf course, and there were so many comments back, we felt like we needed to get some expert help, this is kind of complicated. So we looked at different groups and found the Ethos group in Savannah. You can go online, you have their web address, you can see what kind of projects they've done, but for the cost for them to redo and fix our application for the Emery Thomas would be $4,000. They also gave us one to do a preliminary determination of eligibility for the Riverview golf course as a whole, and that would be $1,500, and then it'd be an additional $5,500 to go ahead and apply if that shows it's eligible. They also gave us a quota with mausoleum, and I think we, let's work with them on this contract, and then we'll work on the mausoleum if we like their services on this one.
So you're asking the night for the, just the Emery Thomas Auditorium?
Yeah, Emery Thomas Auditorium for $4,000, and the preliminary determination for Riverview Golf Course for $1,500, and then if that's favorable, national register nomination for the golf course at $5,500, if it's favorable. If it's not favorable, I'll bring that back to you, we'll decide course of action.
All right.
Mr. Jones, if we were to do this with the golf course, would that include us getting somebody to manage it for us, or would it always have to be a golf course?
No, sir. And the Emery Thomas, after you have national register, if you want to maintain your national register certification, we'd have some strict guidelines to go by, but we could always give it up if we decide to do something different.
If you can strictly for the golf course, part of it now, not Emery Thomas, I don't have any issue with doing that for the Emery Thomas, but for the golf course itself, is why I say.
No, sir. It won't tie us into doing anything with the golf course.
Most approved.
Motion, second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number eight is discussion and/or action on an emergency declaration due to COVID-19 and emergency ordinance mandating the use of face masks. Mr. Jones?
Okay, this would extend it through December the 20th. It's an emergency declaration and ordinance number 20-22, a declaration of a state of emergency continuing because of COVID-19, an emergency ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Dublin, taking immediate effect, requiring the use of masks or face coverings in public during the COVID-19 outbreak, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, any questions on that, council?
The current ordinance is in effect, it goes out when?
It's set to expire on the 15th of this month, which would be before your next regularly scheduled meeting, so that's why this is on this agenda for tonight, and council wants to continue for the 45 days.
Understood. Any other questions?
We need to do, I guess, just like a regular ordinance, maybe a public hearing.
Okay, good deal. We will now close the city council meeting and open a public hearing to discuss this ordinance change. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed change or addition? Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to? If not, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
Most approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all those in, oh, excuse me?
Call roll.
Call roll. Mr. Daniels?
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Chris Smith. Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Gerald Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you. That brings us to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that'd like to come up tonight? Just, we know, we're trying to explain this before every meeting now, where there won't be any confusion, but you have a total of five minutes to address council. If you have more than one, several people wanting to speak on the same issue, we ask that you pick one person to be your spokesman, or most two, and with that being said, we invite you to come up and talk to council if you'd like to. Mr. Walter, good to have you here tonight.
Yes, I'm glad, everyone. Very familiar, and I look a few flashbacks on, but earlier this week, I sent the councilman and the mayor an email, all except our councilman's, Chris Smith, I couldn't find your email address, and I wanted to thank y'all for appointing the race relation task force, I think they're doing a great job. The NWACP is really supporting the first recommendation that the race task force have made, and we give a hundred percent our support. Also, there's other things on their agenda, education, employment, housing, so we hope that y'all would work as closely with that task force as y'all want to do with the first recommendation. So I just wanted to kind of come as part of the NWACP to let you know that we are really in support of the task force, and we think they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. When we began looking for a location for our second Dublin banking office, the historic Henry Building looked like the perfect spot, because Dublin and Lawrence County is our focus, and making banking easier and more convenient for our customers is our goal. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
A local full-service community bank, offering quality banking services. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, now open in downtown Dublin.
There's a lot of misconceptions about pre-existing conditions. Pre-existing conditions can be covered right away. The first day that you have the policy on the effective date of your health insurance policy, pre-existing condition is covered. Maternity care is covered right away. In the old days, a person would have to pay extra to have maternity coverage. There's no charge, no additional charge on your health insurance premium for maternity care, and that once-a-year exam that all of us do not want to go have with the doctor, is covered at 100%. Preventive care and wellness exams are covered at 100%.
Anyone else like to address council? If not, we will now go to council comments, and let's see here. Mr. Smith will start with you. It's confusing the way y'all sit down. Huh? Yeah, Mr. Gerald Smith. That makes it even more confusing.
My parents said I believe Smith is the first person we've ever seen have candy in that, and he's a candy bitch. Just kidding. Thank all of y'all for coming tonight and for all the contributions that you make to our community, our police force and the fire department, all the city service people that work for us, we're trying to make the city run smoothly, so I just, I just, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I echo, I thank everyone for coming out tonight and today, and continue to be safe, continue to follow the CDC guidelines, to, we are getting a little cooler now. I was glad that the air finally kicked off, I thought we had a dead body, so, my toes started getting a little cold, but folks intend to follow guidelines, continue to be safe, and watch out for each other, and as the rest of the schools start, like, the other WCC schools start back Monday, I say we want to be safe out there, have the school buses out there, be on watch for them, their children, getting on and off the bus, let's be mindful of them, and like to thank the police and for all that they do in our neighborhood and all they continue to do around the city and along with the other, a lot of central workers that's out there on the front line, Kevin Feig, there's our nurses and fire department and everyone that's doing their job. We thank you for all that you do, and continue to be blessed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank all of our city staff that's here tonight, thank you for what you do on a daily basis that makes our job up here much, much easier. I want to thank those that presented tonight, also, as I already mentioned, you know, we're embarking upon the winter season, not only is COVID-19 out there, but it's flu season as well, so, you know, heed recommendations and get your flu shots and practice good hygiene and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis?
I want to thank everybody for coming, and I too want to say that we want to continue to practice being safe with the COVID-19 out there, and if we could just heed the recommendations, we can limit the spread of the virus and get our numbers going back in the right direction. Want to also thank those that came up and presented tonight in being concerned with Dublin and Lawrence County. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris, may it...
I too just want to thank everyone, I appreciate the support, everyone, continue to stay safe, and you all know, like, we miss you, you're the best, everyone just continue to stay safe, we appreciate you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Paul Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming, thank the city staff, everything that y'all do, and all our police and fire, first responders, and echo pretty much what everybody else is saying, so thank you, stay safe.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Paul?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Daniels?
No comments.
Mr. Jones?
No comments, none, Mr. Mayor.
Same here, I agree with everybody about being safe. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, early veterans, day on November 11th, for all that you've done, I would be pleased for your service. Hurrah!
And we wish y'all all the safety and a good Thanksgiving, we'll probably see you again before Thanksgiving, but thank everyone for coming. Oh, I'd like to ask if we could give a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss rebel states.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.